I'd like to call the Tuesday, May 1st, 2018 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That's correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Just before we start, I know we're into a potential weather event. We've got both a police officer listening to the emergency channel and Chief Boz is watching the radar. If something would come up, we'll evacuate down to the basement. It's a really secure place and the door is open down there. Ms. Myers, Administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments tonight. First of all, I wanted to congratulate Chief Bill Boz for being honored as the Friend of the Midlands. Bill was selected by CHI Health Foundation Midlands Hospital as an outstanding community member for his passion for community service, not only in his profession as fire chief, but also for his personal involvement in the community. Congratulations, Bill. It was a nice event.[94.61][94.61](applause) Also, just a quick reminder that our next city council meeting will be Wednesday, May 16th, rather than Tuesday, just to account for the election on Tuesday. And then lastly, I just handed out a resolution and approved guiding principles that the Sarpy County and City's Wastewater Sewer Agency approved recently. Again, the guiding principles set the stage for how decisions will be made as to where that sewer infrastructure will be placed initially. No additional actions have been taken by the agency other than some budget approvals, and those will come back to you as well, but just wanted to keep you apprised that we are meeting regularly and will continue to keep you apprised. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilwoman Klue. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seventy-eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item D1, Ordinance 1806, an ordinance to amend Chapter 9 of the Papillion Municipal Code by adding Article 11 to provide for the ability to create a body pursuant to the Nebraska Community Redevelopment Act or the Community Development Act and to provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. Thank you. Item D2, Ordinance 1807, an ordinance to provide for the creation of a limited community redevelopment authority and to provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Stube. Thank you. Item D3, Ordinance 1808, an ordinance to amend the 2017-2018 fiscal budget. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Glover. No ordinances for second reading. Item F1, Resolution R180071, this is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve substandard and blighted declaration with respect to certain real property located in downtown Papillion pursuant to the community development law, Nebraska Revised Statute 182101. Is there a, I'm sorry, public hearing? I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Anybody want to speak in favor? Do we have any opponents? Anybody neutral? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R180071?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Stube. Council discussion? Mr. Mumgarth had asked that we kind of, a lot for public education, that we walk through a little bit of the process we're going through and the purpose of it, because it's actually the first time the city of Papillion has actually ever done this. So, Mr. Mumgarth, I'll do that, and then if you need any clarification, let me know. What we're doing is, there is an area, the old Public Works facility and that area around there, we're technically calling it blighted and substandard. It's a term required by state legislature if we are ever going to use TIF financing to help get that project done. The actions we're taking do not say we're going to do TIF, but it has to be done if we're going to do TIF. The other thing it does, though, is it sets up a process. The, that Community Redevelopment Authority is a public body and a public board that will oversee the process whether or not TIF is used. What it'll do is it'll be a citizens' group and some council members who can kind of oversee the redevelopment plan. What's the goals of it? What do we want to do? Work with the development community on the RFP proposal process, evaluate the proposals when they come back, and actually make a recommendation. And that recommendation that they make will go to the Planning Commission. So, it's a recommending body to the Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission will hold public hearings. The public will weigh in as the work, is it appropriate, what they want to do. And then they'll take the feedback from the Planning Commission, give that back to this new redevelopment authority body to tweak the proposals, and then the proposal will ultimately come to the city council then for a vote. Very much like a planning zoning process, it's just an extra step in the process to manage it. And then, once the redevelopment plan goes through that process and proposals come back from developers, if TIF is requested by a developer, and if we elect to make that part of the process, then there's another series of votes before the city council to even enable that. So, fairly long, deliberate public process to say, how should that area be redeveloped, and what is the role of TIF. So, I think in the end, there's probably, I'm going to guess, four different public hearings, multiple votes between Planning Commission and city council, so it's not a fast process. Mr. Mumgarth.
Thanks, Mayor, for clarifying the process. I'll say, okay, I'm not going to surprise any of my council members here by telling them right off the bat that there are times I've seen throughout the state where I think TIF has been misused. I've watched, other people use TIF. I've watched the legislature struggle with how to define TIF, how to say, tell us when it should be used or shouldn't be used, and oftentimes, people come up with very bad answers, I think. I think TIF is a very useful process, a very useful tool, if it stays with its original purpose and intent. It certainly has never been used in Papillion, and I've heard some people who saw this on the agenda said, well, where do you find any place in Papillion that you can legitimately call blighted and substandard? I agree with them. It's very difficult. Papillion, just, you know, because of the nature of Papillion and its growth, it is difficult to apply those words to anything in Papillion. Unfortunately, those are bad words to be used for what TIF really does. As I've told my council members, I'm not particularly a fan of TIF. I am a fan of TIF if it's used properly. What I fear is that we would see here in Papillion what I think has happened in elsewhere, in that the test for TIF has changed from a very legitimate statement that, no, we can't, somebody can't do the development without the taxpayers' help. And that's really what TIF is. It's taxpayers' help. And it's one thing to say, no, we can't do it. It won't happen without the taxpayers' help. But it's too easy to move over to the development world saying, ah, we won't do it without the taxpayers' help. And that's just a handout. And I don't think that's the legitimate use of TIF. So, I don't want that kind of an attitude to get a foothold in the development community in Papillion. Now, I'm not going to suggest that that's inevitable. It isn't. We might see here a very wonderful proposal, and I'm certainly all in favor of the rejuvenation of downtown Papillion. As I look at it, a small-town feel is not just about size. It's about what you do, what you have, you know, festivals, gathering places, things like that. Downtown Papillion can be that kind of thing and can preserve our small-town feeling. And TIF can be very useful to do that. And certainly redevelopment of this area downtown can be very useful to do that. So, at the moment, I'm going to vote for this because I want to keep the option open. We might get a fantastic development plan that, in reality, won't happen if the taxpayers don't help. So, we should go forward and find out. We would be derelict if we didn't at least look at it and find out. And so, I'm going to vote for this. And I'm, thank you for laying out the process. At some point during that process, you may hear me saying, oh, hold it. We've deviated from the proper path. But I'm looking forward to it because if it works out well, it can be a wonderful thing for downtown Papillion, the business people in downtown Papillion, and the whole town. So, I'm going to vote for it.
Good news is it's a slow, deliberate process, so if you see it going counter to what you believe, there's a lot of points to either stop it or we get it back on the rails. Thank you. Mr. Ingberg.
First of all, thanks again for laying that process out because I think it's valuable, not just for us, but for the public as well. The thing that I'll say is, you know, I won't disagree. The terminology that's used is somewhat harsh for what it really is, but as we enter this process, because it's such a long, deliberate process, step by step, we may find at the end we don't have any proposals we like. We may have proposals we really like that won't require TIF. We may have some that'll say they want to utilize TIF. We get to be involved in that process the entire time, and that's the safety net to me. And I will say this, and then I'll be quiet about it, is I'm going to support it today, but the eight people on the city council plus the city staff, but my fellow members of the city council, I have great, I have great feelings that they will do the right thing. They have, as long as I've sat here. They will go through this deliberately. I respect what answers they come up with, and frankly, I trust everybody around this table will do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I also plan on supporting this. I want to get in a little tit-for-tat with the council member over there that talked about taxpayer money being used. In actuality, my experience with TIF, and I would propose that when we get to the point, if a developer comes in and proposes to use TIF, that we will not use taxpayer money. The TIF note is taken out by the developer and is paid back by the developer. There is no city funds that go into that particular TIF note. Now, there is somewhat of a disagreement with regard to taxpayer fund, because typically, the pre-existing tax dollars, revenue, doesn't change. It's only that incremental increase in the tax revenue that goes to pay off that particular TIF loan. So, without the development, you would, the taxpayers would never see that incremental increase in the tax revenue.
Mr. Mumgarth.
You know, Councilmember Stube, you're very right in a lot of ways. And you and I have disagreed on whether the use of TIF involves the taxpayers participating with taxpayer money or not. It just depends on how you look at it. And really, it starts with depending on whether the project would have been done without TIF or not. You know, if it wouldn't have been done without TIF, then the taxpayers haven't lost a dime. We have a bit of a unique situation here in that at least a good share of the property down there in this area is publicly owned property. Well, it's not paying taxes now. So, any development there is 100% increase to the taxpayers. So, you might look at it on the other side of the coin that, well, any, if the taxpayers don't get that incremental increase because the property wasn't paying taxes in the first place, taxpayers haven't lost a dime. And in the long run, they really, really gain a lot. And so, as we go through the process, I'll be watching, because, you know, that might be the situation, that if that's what makes, if TIF makes a difference to a developer, whether they're going to take our non-tax-paying property and turn it into, you know, in 10, 15 years, turn it into property that pays taxes for another 20, 30 years, then let's go it. Let's do TIF. So, let's watch and see how it goes.
Another checkpoint that we will have outside of the normal TIF process or the redevelopment authority process is, because that is publicly owned land, we're going to be a party to any contract anyway, so we have to sell the land. So, even if, so that's an extra safety valve in, is what's occurring the right thing, you're going to have a say on, should we even sell the land for the use that's being proposed? So, there's even an extra checkpoint. And one of the, we've actually had a couple of developers, I mean, we've had people informally ask about that and how could it be used and redeveloped. And there have been some developers that said they have no interest in TIF. So, I would not be surprised if some proposals come forward that do not include TIF. But this does manage, I think, in a good way, the public RFP process, and keeps it very open out to the public of what's going on there, and a lot of opportunities for the public to weigh in. Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
Seventy-eight zero nays.
Motion passes. And there'll be a couple of items related to this on the next agenda as well. Item F2, Resolution R180073, a resolution to prove an application submitted by Jane Leland Investments LLC, doing business at Twisted Vine to expand the premise of their Class CK liquor license to include an outdoor patio area. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R180073?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? I know the applicant is here. Did you want to say something? Yeah, go ahead and come on up. And even though I think everybody knows you, state your name for the record, please.
Kim Ayers. I'm first going to speak as president of the Downtown Business Association. It has been a pleasure having Kate and Dan as members of the DBA. First of all, they're so committed to downtown Papillion. It's wonderful to work with business owners that want to see it grow and want to bring community members down here, and that is first and foremost on Kate and Dan's mind. With the possibility of additional growth in La Vista and possibly with the Papillion Commons on 84th and 370, I think it's really important that downtown Papillion keeps up with the pace. We've got to keep attracting people down here, and we have to be committed to the community, which is our goal with the DBA and with also Kate and Dan. Now, from business owner of Kijamas, it's also wonderful to have businesses that continually bring new people to town. I get people walking in the store all the time on their way to Twisted Vine. So, it's nice to know that we're supporting a business that has a positive impact on the community and are really out to look out for, you know, making downtown Papillion still the heart of the community.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Anybody neutral? And if you'd state your name for the record.
Anderson. I am, I'll say that I'm neutral for now. In regards to the outdoor patio area, there's been concern over the past couple of years regarding the noise that comes from certain music venues, and I was wondering if that was something that was approved by the city council for them to have outdoor music as well.
Who would that be best directed to? Ms. Myers?
Certainly, this is a liquor license application for an expanded area, so this action today only controls liquor within the expanded area.
Okay. I guess that was my only question, again, for concern for the residents of the downtown Papillion neighborhood. We just want to make sure that our area is covered and represented well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any council discussion? Mr. Florence.
Could we have the applicants come forward?
And if you'd state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Kate Ranals. My husband, Dan, oh, there you are. Dan and I own Twisted Vine in downtown.
Very good. I like what you guys are doing. I appreciate bringing entertainment to downtown. I think that's a legitimate question, so you're going to put in a beer garden, and so would a beer garden also include, you know, piped-in music or speakers that might broadcast the Husker games or might broadcast music from inside the facility out into the beer garden?
Yes, we do plan to have two outdoor speakers similar to what you would have at home that would have the same music that we have inside, outside. But we do have the ability to control the volume level independently of the outside speakers versus inside. So, we would make sure it's not, it would just be background noise.
Okay. So, I'm guessing you're aware that there has been some controversy regarding music and
Yes.
and how loud that is. And so, I think as we move forward, we'd want to be respectful of that situation. And so, I don't know how exactly we would determine that you're going to, you know, you're going to moderate the sound to be background noise.
I think there's another ordinance regarding decibel levels.
There is.
So, that would be what we would follow. If there was any concern, we would follow the same regulation that the other bars and, you know, the Stave and Brownies do for their outdoor music. So, we would make sure to follow any of that if there were concerns. But we don't have, the plan does not include a stage. So, we are, it is not a live music venue for us. The plan is, we have three, and if you've driven by constructions in progress, we have three fire pits. It will be couches and chairs for about 25 people to sit. There is no stage. It is truly meant just to be a comfortable space to sit and enjoy a drink. So, it's not an entertainment venue in that nature.
So, will you have hours of operation for the beer garden that are different from the other facility?
No, the hours of operation will match the inside facility. So, we close at 10:00 on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We close at 11:00 on Fridays and Saturdays, and we are closed on Sundays and Mondays.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mumgarth.
Well, I listened to the city administrator's statement that, well, this is just about the liquor license. But I sit here and think, well, no, it's more than just about the liquor license. It's about the effect the liquor license has on the neighborhood, and I hope you're recognizing that. And here's my difficulty. I'm not against what you're trying to do. We certainly have opened the door in Papillion here to have outdoor music at the liquor establishments, and it does add a great deal of ambience, and it might add a lot of success for you. The problem that we have with that is that if it becomes a problem to the neighborhood, if you're, you know, if you're doing things with that music because your customers like it, and it keeps people awake and it creates, becomes a nuisance, we don't have a whole lot of options. Our primary only option is to take away your liquor license, and we don't want to do. And I'd sit here right now and say, well, holy cow, I don't want to do that. I bring this up only because I want to just, you know, I want everybody to understand that when we allow this, we are relying upon the goodwill of the people who run the business. And as your neighbor, Kim, has already told us, we're justified in doing that in your instance. I just want to remind everybody that that is where we're at. We don't want to ever have a problem with it, and we're trusting you that you'll take care of it. So, thank you very much.
We appreciate that.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I just got a couple of questions.
Mr. Mumgarth, can you turn your microphone off? There you go. Go ahead.
Are you about two buildings down from Brownies? Because Brownies has an outside patio area.
We are basically backyard, catty corner to Brownies, across the alley.
Okay. So, does he typically have music on the outside?
Yes.
So, are you guys going to be dueling music and trying to compete with each other?
No, that doesn't help anyone.
Okay.
No.
So, I mean, we've, you've experienced him having music outside now. Has that any impact on your business over there?
No, they do have their radio outside, and from time to time, they do have bands. So, no, it'll be a test and learn. We've stood outside, and we can hear their music. And if that, you know, if our customers can hear their music, we don't need to have music.
Okay.
It doesn't make sense for people to try and hear two different things.
Okay.
If we can't hear that well, and we need to have low-volume music on our side, you know, we want that possibility with some speakers.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Klue.
Thank you. You know, we're trusting you. When we vote yes, we have already trusted you with a liquor license, and this is another spot where we're going to, or at least I am going to trust you, that you're going to be the good neighbors, that we're not going to have the issues. And actually, I'm excited. I think anytime we have a business in the downtown area that's succeeding, that knows how to do great customer service and is helping to bring people in, is a real attribute to our communities. So, thank you, and I certainly hope that you continue to have great success in the area.
Thank you.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seventy-eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. I don't think any committees have met. Do we have any comments from the floor? Yes. And if you'd state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Schofield. I'm a Papillion resident, and I just want to make a little communication with you guys. On Tuesday, April 17th, I sent a message to Mayor Black and the entire city council via the web link on papillion.org. My communication was to voice my concern about the Ted Nugent camp for kids scheduled for early June. I have not received a reply from anybody yet, so it's been two weeks. I'm concerned that with our current climate and political divide faced by our nation and communities, having the city of Papillion endorse an activity that is actively branded with the name of an individual who has made no doubt about his disdain for several citizens of this country. He's taken to likening liberals and academics to rabid coyotes and encouraging people to shoot them. I should also disclose to you that I am in academia, and I am in public health. Is this the message that we want to send to citizens of Papillion? I do really crappy reading off a script, by the way. I'm much better at libbing. I'm by no means anti-gun. I'm by no means anti-Second Amendment. My husband is retired military. I'm well-versed in handling and shooting weapons. I am, however, appalled by Mr. Nugent's antics and find him a truly poor voice for the many he claims to speak for. I'm very disappointed that the city has chosen to endorse an activity that carries such a divisive individual's name, no matter how altruistic his foundation is. And I'm even more disappointed in the lack of response in my request for feedback. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Ingberg.
Excuse me. One second. Just polling the people on our side, we never got anything from you.
Okay. I can, I actually attempted to forward it again on last Thursday, and then there's something going on with your website.
Did you put it in through the website?
I put it in through the website. I have the email that confirms what my comments were, and then I followed up last Thursday evening with an actual link to the Infowars episode where he's claiming what he's claiming.
Just as a suggestion, I know it's more of a hassle for you, but if you go into that city website, it'll have our individual emails.
I did that. I did that on Thursday.
I didn't. I didn't receive it. Nobody else on the side received it either.
So, there's some kind of something going on. I mean, I did it through my Gmail. I'll look and see, because I thought, well, maybe there's a glitch with the system, but...
If it went in through the mayor's hotline, we did do a website update. So, if it went in through the mayor's hotline, we'll check in and track that and get it back out.
Yeah.
If it was through email, then we've got an issue.
Yeah, it was assigned, it said it was assigned to somebody.
Okay.
And I offered solutions. I am completely, totally willing to help plan something that does not endorse something so divisive in this community. I believe in hunter's safety. I believe in our firearm safety, love of outdoors children. I'm the little free library lady for the city. So, I just...
We'll get back into the mayor's hotline, and we'll make sure that that's in there and get it out to everybody.
Got it. So, I took the time to do it now. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any council comments?
I'll just have a question for the mayor. I've seen this question before. I've seen some answers from the rec people. I assume we can get an answer out real quickly. Okay, thank you.
Any other council comments? Okay. Just a couple of updates from the last couple of weeks. The Bellevue Chamber hosted a mayor's forum. The Bellevue Chamber is starting to look at Papillion, La Vista, Bellevue, and Plattsmouth almost as a submarket now, kind of a mini metro area of its own, a trade area. And so, they had a mayor's forum. We all gave updates on what was going on. We also had a wastewater agency board meeting, and as Ms. Myers mentioned, the guiding principles were handed out. And if you have questions of how that's going, the main thing going on right now is a selection of a fiscal individual and approval of the budget for the next fiscal year. I'm working on that. And that funding will start identifying the priorities of implementation for that sewer agency. Also attended the business partnership with the school district. They had their annual kickoff celebration for that. Thank you for everybody that's involved in that. Mentioned the Midlands Evening with Friends. Again, Chief Boz, congratulations on that. Great partnership. And then, Tony, thanks for the Arbor Day event. Always a great event. I think we've been doing that now 29 years. Councilman Jaworski, council president, gave a proclamation. Pro soccer, talked about the partnership, and we're planting some trees out at the new soccer fields. And then, the women's club has an art contest, and the winner of that's actually down in the art gallery downstairs. Couple of reminders again, the next council meeting is the 16th on Wednesday, not Tuesday, the 15th. Couple of ribbon cuttings coming up. May 9th at noon is First Watch. First Watch took over Agony. They did a remodeling, and they opened just this weekend, so pop in there. And then, on May 15th at 4:00 PM, MultiCare Medical MultiCare Medical is an expansion of an existing business as well. They're up at 72nd and Cornhusker. And then, not a ribbon cutting, but I believe on Monday, a new sandwich shop opens downtown in the Bell Place Shops, kind of a New York deli type thing. So, another business downtown. I think that's most of the activity going on. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Vote.
Motion by Councilman Glover.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Seventy-eight, zero, nays.
We are adjourned.